To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Where's this working?
My microphone is now on. Thank you, Michelle. So, this is a work session. First thing I would like to say, ask, do we have any members of the media present online who would like to introduce themselves? Okay, we're good there. Please remember to mute your cell phones and I need to remind you to turn your mics on when you talk and mics off when you're finished. As I demonstrated for you. Okay, so this, since this is a brief business meeting immediately followed by a regularly scheduled board work session and executive session, there will be no public participation. So Jared, would you please give us communication?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Good to see everyone and welcome, Annalisha, tonight. It's great. Thank you, Anne. I'll say, thank you, everybody for being here. It's great to see everybody here. Anne, we're waving at you right now. Anne is actually on vacation and joining us via Zoom. So, thank you very much, Director Krimets. Just also a reminder, as Madam Chair said, we have three different meetings tonight. There's a business meeting and then a work session and that'll be followed by an executive session tonight. So there have been no changes since publication of the agenda, so it is as was published. Thank you.
We have a request for approval of engineering firm for the RHS VOTEC building east seismic renovation. Cheryl, would you like to speak to that?
Sure. The district has been awarded a seismic rehabilitation grant for the Roseburg High School VOTEC Building East. And the reason it's specified as east is because the building is so large that we plan to do it in two phases, and this is the first phase. The amount of that seismic grant is just under $2.5 million. And again, it will provide seismic renovations in the east part of the building, that is the classroom more specific portion. We did do a request for proposals for engineering services on Oregon buys. That is the statewide public entity procurement website. Vendors go in and they say, I'd like to be notified of any requests or bids for paper clips or engineering services. And so several, probably over 100 firms were contacted. Did notify engineering firms registered and we did receive one proposal. And that was from ZCS Engineering. Their fee amount is $255,500. And we have, we have successfully partnered with ZCS Engineering for several of our seismic renovations. In fact, all of them that we have done. And there you have it.
I would entertain a motion.
I would move for approval of the engineering term selection for the VOTEC east seismic renovation.
Can I second that?
Great. Do we have any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Anne, do we have a vote, man? Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so with the business portion of this meeting concluded, this brief board meeting is recessed to immediately convene into a board work session. Okay. Welcome to the board work session. Yeah, yeah. We want to welcome Superintendent Annalisa Nicholson. I can't believe my words. Nicholson, Nicholson from the Douglas ESD. She's going to give us a report on the local service plan.
Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be with you all. I'm Annalisa Nicholson. I have the pleasure of being the superintendent of the Douglas ESD. And I also get the pleasure of doing this work in the community in which I was raised, which I think makes it a little bit extra special to me as well and and extra invested, I guess, in the success of our kids in this region. So tonight, I'm gonna, I got a couple, two-part presentation. I'm gonna talk a little bit about the ESD and why we exist and how our funds are appropriated to the ESD. And then we're gonna talk about Roseburg services that are offered through the ESD as well, so. So the ESD, the mission of the ESD is providing equitable, high-quality, cost-effective and locally responsible education services at a regional level. And so we are in statute, an agency that is in statute to provide services to a region. There are 19 ESDs across the state and I'll have you move forward. It just, there, and there are also 45 states across the nation that have ESDs. We're all called different names, of course, but so this, this intermediary between the Department of Education and school districts exists across the nation. In Oregon, our origins date back to 1862 with the county schools. And then in 1963, ESDs kind of became what we are now. A part of the statute in the organization to, to serve that mission that I just shared. And then in 1977, we got our official name that we still live by today, which is the Education Service Districts. And I'll start with, I missed a little cue. In 1963, we were really to help operationalize things across the ESD. And it was more like business functions and things like that. And then in 1977, and my IDA folks know that that's about two years after the federal IDA was passed, special education became a component of what ESDs do. So as IDA went into implementation and IEPs and all that fun stuff came about and serving our special education students, we became a player in that piece. So funding, we, because we are an agency that is in state statute, we receive state school funds. It's appropriated directly to us by the legislature. So there's a block of funding, the largest about like 95% for the 197 districts. And then there's a smaller block of funding that is distributed across the 19 ESDs. And that is done through the collective ADMW of the region. So for our region, it's just over 16,000, yes, ADMW. And then by statute, 90% of those funds go, must be spent on services. And so I'm gonna move into talking about how we plan and invest those dollars in those services. So the local service plan as it exists today was part of a House bill in 2005. And again, it's the plan that districts in the ESD create together to, to decide how we will distribute that funding. Have you go ahead and move forward. So this is our, this is our region. As I said, I've, I, I feel like I've got a wonderful region with these 13 wonderful component school districts. So as I said, it's about, there are about 13,000 students across the region. And it totals about 16,000 ADMW. And so in statute, our local service plan has four core service areas. So if you're ever hanging out with a bunch of ESD folks, we talk about these a lot. So one of those service areas is special needs. As I said, that dates back to the passage of IDA, the IDA Act in serving our kids with special needs. Technology supports the component school districts, school improvement services and administrative services. So all of our things in this plan relate to those four core service areas. In addition, just like school districts, when the legislature says, we need you to do this, that happens with the ESD. So we also do the homeschool registration for the regions. That statute is assigned to ESDs as well. Have you move forward. And so the goals of the plan, again, in statute are these five things. You can see the fifth one, that's been around since our inception, maximizing operational and fiscal efficiencies across component school districts. So for us, that looks like technology and networking, the network technology across the region and sharing in that. And you can see many of our services are linked to the first bullet point of helping with federal and state law. And when we get to the Roseburg document, you will see that those goals are all linked to the services as well. So everything in the local service plan is related to the core services and to achieve these four goals. So when districts sit together to think about what is it that we need at a regional level to serve the 13,000 students, these are the things that we are connecting those things to. And actually, before I move into that, I want to acknowledge that the local service plan is a living document. So I've been at the ESD, I don't know, 16, 17 years. And there are things in this document that have been there the whole time, speech services. It's been there the whole time. There are, there are things, services that have came and gone. So behavioral health was there when I started. It went away for a little bit. And then kids said, we need some help and support. And it came back and has had many iterations since then. There are services that grow and expand. So autism, as the, as the number of students who are experiencing autism increase, that service has grown. We added an additional FTE this year due to the number of kids that needed those services. Nursing, that's new. So I'm gonna oversimplify this, but nurse, school nursing was a part of the county public health. And when they transitioned to the public health network, nursing came to the ESD. And as you all know, what your school nurses are doing is, you know, all of the health requirements to keep kids safe. And one nurse didn't do it. And so that has grown as well with that. That service has grown as well to meet the needs of districts. And then we also have a complement with it with a contract service there as well. So just acknowledging that this document is about students and students' needs. And as districts bring those to to the team, we, we figure out how to meet those needs. In addition to what's in the LSP, the majority of our budget, so $12 million of our budget is general fund. I have a $61 million budget. So 49 million of that is other programs, regional, state contracts and grants that we provide to benefit the students of this region from zero to 21. So many of the services that the ESD is offering are around early learning services. So EI ECUSE, that's our special education programs for children zero to five, which is a very, very important program because we can get their developmental needs met. And when they show up at the Roseburg doorstep as kindergartners, hopefully they are just depending on what developmental delay they have, they're ready for kindergarten, or they have the supports they need to be successful in kindergarten. And then finally, we have contract services that we offer to school districts and Roseburg utilizes two of those services. I'll have you go ahead and move forward. So now we're going to dig into the, the document that I prepared for the, for the board. And so what this is, are services that Roseburg Public Schools are utilizing. Roseburg Public Schools utilizes the majority of services in the LSP. And I'm just gonna go over what the columns are, and then I'm gonna highlight a few things in, in the document. It's every, mine's not in color. Everyone got it? Okay, good. So the first column is just the program. These are services that collectively the districts are said, we need these to benefit our kids. Most of these services are aimed at some of the most complex, kids with some of the most complex needs in our community. And, and so we're providing services that help them learn in the classroom. The page number in the LSP is just referencing the page that you can find more information about this in our LSP. The FTE is the FTE that is assigned to the Roseburg School District. Service allocation is of our total service, how much Roseburg Public Schools is utilizing of that service. And I'm gonna say this is as of 9:30 of this year. And one of the purposes of regional programs is they expand and contract with district needs. So usually, right now, the numbers are probably at their lowest. And then as kids are made eligible for services and we get into spring, numbers get a little bigger. And then as we get to the end of the school year, kids get exited out of IEPs and that sort of thing. So this is point in time information. And so I just want to acknowledge that it can change throughout the year based on the needs of, of kids throughout the region. There's a description. Then there's the goals that I referenced earlier. And if, if you want to look back on those, they're at the bottom of page two. There's how these things align to your strategic plan, which is a really critical document in your district. And then there's the total ESD budget for each of those services. So Roseburg makes up about 40.6 ADMW of our region. So if you look at service allocation, especially the first page is services that are, with the exception of behavioral health connections and communications, are services that are directly linked to kids with, on IFS or on IEPs. And so when you look at this data, you can see that there's a few spots where you're right where we would expect you to be, about 40% of that service. And there's a few spots where you're a little higher. And again, that's one of the important pieces of the region as we expand and contract based on the kids' needs. Nursing services, I will, I will call out that one. We only have three FTE. So mathematically, Roseburg has the largest portion of that. The other two folks are shared amongst the other 12 districts. And then if you go down to the second page, you'll see, I've put it in a different way. And I know the last time I was here, there was a desire to have FTE. And I'm, I'm happy to add the total FTE for the LSP to this, if that would be helpful. The reason why I do it, why I share the allocation this way is every district has access to these services. My staff aren't necessarily assigned to these districts, but they stand ready to serve. So Roseburg's needs in school improvement look very different than another district. You have your instructional leadership framework that has its own language, all of that stuff. And so our role in, in, in these services is to go to the district and, and meet the needs of those districts and, and fill in or support them where they have needs. I'll also call it network services, just like your budget where the majority of your programs are FTE, right? 80, 85% of school budgets are FTE. But you also have programs that are mostly the cost of the program. So network services is just over two FTE. The bulk of that budget is what it costs to operate the network and all the fire, all the firewall and antivirus and licensing and all of that kind of stuff. So that, that one's a little different and, and every, the 1/14th includes the ESD. We are part of that network. So again, I'm happy I can add the FTE if that would be helpful, the total FTE that's assigned to the region for those. And then you can see that, that Roseburg has access to as much or as that, as they need. The other thing I wanted to talk about with service allocation is there's two words we use in with our, in, with our therapists, so OTs, PTs, SLPs is caseload and workload. So caseload is just the number of kids that are on IEPs in which their IEPs say these services are needed as part of their goals. And workload is more in reference to the complexity of that need. So some, so if you look at like the spectrum of autism, there are complex needs that kids have, and there are less complex needs that kids have. And so workload is another factor in how FTE gets assigned to districts. Because basically, if there's, they're more complex, they, the students need more time with that service to support their learning. And then I'm gonna go to the, the total ESD budget. So we fund by service for the region. And so I'll admit, I have a bit of a bias to keep that number whole. I also understand that Roseburg wants to, wants to understand what is coming in, is going back out to kids and the importance of that. So what I will, so what I will do here real quick, and I'm, and I can get some more specifics to Jared if that would be helpful, to Superintendent Corden. So Roseburg is about 40.6% of ADMW. And so if I take my 90%, that's about $2.8 million of service. And if I just run down and do some, some quick, easy math here, starting with motor team. So Roseburg's we've got two FTE allocated to Roseburg. That's about half of the service. So that's about $200,000 in service that's there. I moved down to nursing services. It's about 150. I moved down to speech and language services. So again, it's about half of that service. It's about 1.7. So now I'm at 2 million with just those three services. Autism consultation is, it's about 150-ish of that service. And then EI ECUSE evaluations, again, those numbers is based on the kids who show up, who show up to be evaluated. So that number can grow based on the number of kids who are zero to five, who are residents in the Roseburg School District. And that's about 260. So about 2.4 just with those services alone. And then you add in the payment to, to districts and we get to 2.8. And you can see there's other services that aren't included. And that's because we invest more than 10, we invest more than 90% of our funds in districts. So we do our best to get maximum amount of dollars to these services so that kids get their needs met. That was a quick. Yes, go ahead. Questions?
Probably silly, but ADMW, what is that?
Average daily membership weighted. So Oregon has a very unique formula. We've learned as they've gone out to see if there was something better where we recognize that there's some lived experiences that kids have that cost more to educate them. So special education is a weighting and I believe it's 0.5, right, Melissa? Looking at 0.5. Yeah. So it has a, it's probably one of the largest weights in that poverty, ELL. I'm missing. Yeah, pregnancy mothers. So all of the additional things that kids need, we add a weight to acknowledge that kids need more resource to do that in the state of Oregon.
So we have assigned to Roseburg is 16.62. And then FTE is full-time equivalent or, or a full-time employee. I don't know if we're talking. Full-time equivalent, okay. All right. Just want to make sure we're on the same page, using the same acronyms. Of those 16.62 full-time, how many are actually, how many full-time actually employees or licensed speech and language pathologists do we actually get at Roseburg out of that 16.2? Of those 16 point, whatever, full-time employees, how many of them are licensed speech and language pathologists?
I have that number, but it's not sitting here. It's back over there. I will get that to Jared.
Is it, is it, can you guess? I mean, is it two? Is it 10? Around?
I think it's around nine or 10.
And then I get, let's do more. But remember last year too, we were asking for a specific dollar amounts for the services we got. I don't see exactly maybe what we were looking for. I mean, like, you've got this total number, the ESD budget 3.6 and then our section of it's 1.7, you said. So like, how much does each speech and language pathologist get paid? I guess that's kind of what I thought we were looking for, more of a breakdown. The, the, the actual licensed one versus the, versus maybe the IAs or whoever else is assisting. That's what I was, I like numbers.
So I didn't understand that. Yeah, so.
And you did say you could get Jared's stuff later. So that's what I'm.
I'm happy to follow up. This, this is a new document. So I, I know that as we put more information into it, you guys are gonna have more questions and we might have more needs. So you're just looking for what the average.
No, not average. I mean, I want to know what you guys are paying a speech and language pathologist. So we can contrast and compare and see, you know, maybe, maybe you guys aren't getting the best deal for speech and language pathologists. I don't know. But we won't know until we look at the numbers, right? I mean, that's, I'd like it to be broken down more if we could.
Sure. I like it. Me too. Yeah. So we can get you that number.
Oh, on that.
Your mic on?
Yeah. Yeah. So what, what you're asking and I, what I think I'm looking for too is, I mean, this is great to know what your overall budget is, but I mean, to be honest, we're not really concerned. I mean, it's great that you're showing that, but we, we'd like to see what we're paying for each one of these within the ballpark. I know things flux up and down, but you know, just to give us those numbers would be helpful for us.
Okay.
Just so we know what we're paying for and where we're paying it. That's important.
Yeah. And again, the funds are appropriated to the ESD for the services for the, for the region. So I can give you your allocation of that service.
That's most important to us. Thanks.
The questions? Director Cubic, do you have questions?
Well. Hope somebody wrote down all those numbers.
Thank you. I, I lost track of the numbers as we're going through them. And I was interested in those. There's just some operational things that I would be interested in. But this is, I think this is an important issue. So before I ask any of those, in getting back to us, how long will that take?
In getting back the numbers?
Yeah, or to, to address the questions that come up tonight.
Some of them are financial, and so I will have to get with my CFO. So I, if I could have two weeks, I think that would, we can get those and.
We have a November meeting, we have a December meeting. So that'd be great for having for one of our next meetings.
Sure.
Then I was wondering, and it's really, it's coordination stuff. What do you do? What's the communication or the collaboration in getting services to us and providing us training? And how, how does our district help customize the services that you're delivering to us?
Sure. Drawn down that. If I miss any of the questions in my response, just remind me. So for this special education services, that's based on your students with IEPs. And so we receive those numbers and those students, and then we assign our FTE based on that. My directors are meeting with these brilliant folks over here to discuss the services and, and what that service looks like in the Roseburg School District and across the region, it looks different based on the needs of the district. So that's just conversation. There's with like communications, we've got a scope of work outlined around the types of communication services and how much of trying to think of the word, of what that, like the, the amount of work that, that entails, like how many articles and that sort of stuff. And then, yeah, the customization flexibility is what we are about. The customization is based on having conversations with the Roseburg Public Schools and what their needs are and, and then, and then delivering the service in that manner.
Let me just pursue that. Not to you, but is that working for us?
We're talking about special education. I mean, we either want to chime in here, but you want to start on that or get me to start on that? You're fine. Yeah. Let me start. I mean, Annalisa and I worked, we're working, always looking for ways to improve this. It's not perfect. We I mean, I think our bottom line is we have services per kid that get to the student, right? We've talked about our four targeted schools. They're all in special education right now. That's where that, that's where that is at, right? We need to increase those conversations of how to make sure these kids are getting the services they need to move forward. That's a key area for us.
That's how, that's where my questions come from both sides of that.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, I think, I don't, I mean, the, I think we continue to talk about how to make improvements to, to, I mean. we continue to talk about how to make improvements to, to, I mean, oftentimes it, it takes a high level of coordination to happen well. Right? Because you're really talking about two different employers and two different systems of how people are hired and there's oftentimes two different systems, right? And so melding those systems. Um, and I often say like, we don't have any easy jobs in our district. It's hard. The work's going to be hard and, and we I think for the ESD, we're, we may be uh, harder. I don't speak for the ESD, but for Anna Leach, but we've got some things we're really, really passionate about that we, that we expect, like in the professional learning side of things and we have a scope and sequence and I and so um, we're not kind of a plug and play um, always just you can drop in and make an impact. Um, a lot, a lot of these services sit kind of within, under Melissa's purview, if you will. Um, and I know that coordination has been bumpy at times in terms of you know, um, SLPs come to mind, for example, you know, like where they're placed and how that works and there's room for improvement in that with how we coordinate together. But that's something we, we have to prioritize. Uh, we um, I have, I think all of us have an aversion to inefficiency, right? So we want to maximize the service to kids. That's probably what this is about, so.
I apologize to the board members because I didn't have the preface that you had earlier in the year about talking about ESD, so can pursue that a little bit further? The, so I, I get the, and that's the collaboration of the coordination because I strongly believe in the value of ESDs. I mean, I've been aware of public education in our community for quite a while. But how? Who? Who supervises, who evaluates your employees and what do we do if you send us a person that doesn't fit our culture?
It's a great question. Um, and it's, it's one of the, the great challenges of the ESD. So um, so I have directors just like you who are supervising and coordinators who supervise employees. Um, most, because our special education folks are mostly therapists. So my, my SLP coordinator is an SLP coordinating and supervising SLPs and evaluating SLPs. So there's a lot of advantage to um, having someone who knows what that role is like. Um, I think when there are issues, that's where communication becomes really key and communicating here's what's happening. And then uh, depending upon those issues, uh, we figure out what to do. Um, how to either support a resource and support that individual or figure out um, what to do um, with that individual in that service area.
Do we provide uh, guidance or training on our strategic plan to people that come into our district to work?
We do. I mean, I don't know if you want to talk about them, Melissa, a little bit, but.
So uh, anytime we do any kind of professional learning in our department. We invite our partners from the ESD to join because the paperwork that they are completing, we are responsible for when it comes to compliance with ODE.
Uh, pardon me, do they come?
If I always make sure that the coordinator attends at the minimum because it's my um, hope that she'll go out and make sure that the staff get that information at least from her. Um, and yes, she is responsive to that.
That doesn't sound good enough to me.
I also am very, okay, so my goal is to provide the best for our students. And so I am very proactive when there is an issue to reach out. I meet with the speech and language coordinator at least once a month in person, but we are in, I am very much in communication with her. At the beginning of every school year, I pull every student in all the different areas, ASD, speech and language, and invite our people from the ESD to come and meet with me so that um, we have some input and they know how many kids we have in the different areas that are going to be served to try to um, coordinate services. But it's our, we're initiating it on our side.
There, there are a couple of other things that we do together. Okay. So Kefik, I'm on a roll. Okay, apologize. New guy in the block, you know. So there are a couple of other things that we do together, like staff development. Do we partner on, on what that is?
As far as for your staff or my staff attending?
Well, our staff that might participate in what, whatever staff, I mean, your staff and our staff, it's, it's
Yeah, oh, it was.
Us saying them and it's us. But do we um, do think, things that you provide, do we participate with you in setting priorities or anything like that?
Yeah, so I think our team had met with, with Jill and that has looked various different ways over the course of time based on um, the needs of Roseburg. Um, and so uh, if we have regional services, we meet with the region and say, are there common needs and then respond to those needs, but also when we, when we look at district services and what is it that they need? Um, that's where we're connecting in with uh, district, districts to figure out what that looks like. In Roseburg, it looks very different than many of the other districts that we're in because of um, the central office staff that you have. Um, and I would, something that I want to say is the ESD um, underwent a strategic design and one of the key components of that design is feedback um, and communication. And then so this is something that Jared and I um, have been chatting about of how do we set up? You know? This is my third year at the ESD, so how do we set up this communication system um, to work uh, in the Roseburg School District? And so, and it's what we're doing in other districts to build that looks very different than what um, we're looking at doing in Roseburg. Can I share?
No.
Okay, um, and so that's really my staff being in um, with, with your staff. Um, to know what those priority levels are, priorities are, to hear that conversation. That is really, really important for us to be able to deliver services, to have access to those conversations. And so uh, so uh, I think we've, we've got pieces of that started and that's become a really high priority for us in, in redesigning how we connect with districts.
Wow, that's, that, that sounds great.
Yeah.
It sounds great. That's how it ought to be working. It should be working, I think. Yeah.
Yep, so, yeah, and that was the feedback we got is, um, and also just thinking about your kindergarten teacher who has our therapist coming into the classroom. How do we get both the great feedback and the, the feedback for growth um, back to our staff so that obviously we always just want folks to just chat with each other. It's the best way um, to make things work, but also discussing how does that feedback get to the people who can really help and resource and support um, folks? And also say, well done. That's important too.
I mean, really impressed with that approach. And that sounds really good. I hope that continues and the strength between the two entities is even better all the time. Also, as I was reading through this and I didn't understand it, so my apology, but we hire substitutes and we hire substitutes through the ESD?
It's a confusing line.
How does that work?
That was actually a question from Director Crimmits. So like, what happens when you have your person serving and they're not there, do you provide a sub for them? That was kind of piggybacked onto that question.
Yeah, go ahead, Michelle. I can, you want me to take it?
Yeah, I think those are two separate things. So I think what Director Cubic is asking is it shows on here that forty percent of substitute services, but we also separately contract with edgy staff for substitute services. I know the service that we utilize through the US, through the ESD is um, the licensure part of substitutes and sponsoring those license and doing all of the the paperwork and the leg, legwork around the licensure of the substitutes. So that's what service we utilize from the ESD.
And it also includes the software for substitute placement.
Is it substitutes just for the services you provide or substitutes across the board?
So that, that line item is referencing the substitutes of your teachers.
Substitutes across the board.
Yeah, yeah. Um, yeah, for our services, uh, if it's usually coverage. Um, or if it's going to be like a longer absence, then we um, we always have an SLP posted, but um, we'll find a contractor to uh, fill in uh, that space. So uh, right now nursing, we, we um, we have a couple of nurses um, who are out and so we've, we've um, brought back someone who retired to help support the region in making sure we, we meet our target on that service. So it's a little uh, it's a little bit more complex um, because of the type of roles that we have. Um, there's not a, a pool of subs for folks, so uh, we have to utilize um, either folks who, like you, have retired or contract services for those, to fill those gaps, so.
I got one.
Yeah.
Uh, Douglas Regional Educator Network. What is that?
Um, so that is trying to figure out like where to start on. That is a it's a part of the governor's office. Um, trying to think if it started with uh, Kit Sopper or Brown. I think it was Brown. And that was a design to rethink how professional learning is delivered. So um, there's a perception that it's, you know, top-down that um, you know, the bosses are saying this is what teachers need. And the Regional Educator Network is trying to um, bring in that teacher voice. So it's a part of the Educator Advancement Council. Um, we are one region of that. Um, and so um, and it's the, the, the other reason why I'm stuttering a bit is it's also in transition this year. Like with most state programs, we do something one way for three years and then it transitions to something new. So um, we're in transition with that program, but um, so basically it supports um, uh, teacher professional learning and administrator professional learning.
You know how it's paid for?
Uh, uh, like the original funds, it's out of the governor's office. I don't, I don't I'd have to get back to you on if it's a part of ODE's budget or if it's a part of the governor's budget. I don't know if anyone in this room knows the, where the big pot comes from, but I can get back to you on that.
What are the, what are like the outcomes that you've seen from it?
Just in general, uh, like teachers feel heard. Um, we ask questions like uh, after you attend a PD event, are you utilizing it in the classroom? And we see those numbers of utilization go up. So one of the biggest things or what I find to be one of the coolest things about the RENs, we're actually measuring professional learning and, and its impact. And so um, we've uh, we've got reports and data on um, uh, teacher perspective on, on its impact, but those are the two things is they feel like the professional learning is based on their needs uh, and what they need to grow as a teacher in the classroom or reinforce the good things they're doing in a classroom. And also just the if you go do something, we obviously want to see that practice in the classroom and.
Do you believe it's a benefit to Roseburg School District?
The REN? Well, I don't know that that's a question that I can answer. I think Roseburg School District should answer that, could answer that question um, a lot better. I know as a region, there's, we've seen um, great gains and benefits across the region. Uh, for teachers, uh, like with anything, it, there are things that um, as I think it's in its fifth or sixth year of im- implementation, so it's just at the beginning. And even in those six years, we've changed um, how we operate um, the system. So it's really based on measuring what you do. So you have an idea that you think is going to change something in the classroom. You try it, you ask if it worked. If it did, keep going. If it didn't, make changes. So it's really based on that um, action cycle, um, which is a great behavior.
Good. Quick question, or actually two, but um, coaching services, what is, what is that? Um, I mean, is that, because we have a pretty strong kitchen learning department. Um, what, what does ESD offer that we, we can't or we don't? Or what?
Yeah, so over the years, it's, it's been lots of different things. So it might be um, uh, like before you had the coaching staff, you had um, we, we, I think we're doing a little bit more in coaching, but it might just be like a content area that um, one of my folks has expertise in and we come alongside those sorts of things. So um, I think it's always based on the district priorities of that year and, and what is needed.
Then there's the one thing that's still not clear and I don't know why I'm not getting it. Um, the whole ed staff.
Oh, edgy staff?
Ed, ed staff. What? I mean, and there's a lot of school districts that don't use ESD for that. They just go straight to ed, uh, eddest staff, right? I mean, pretty sure of that. What? I mean, it's just if you're paperwork that you do or?
Yeah, so we contract directly with edgy staff for the substitutes. The ESD supports the licensure of the substitutes. So applying for the license, helping with those pieces, that's what that's that portion of it. We contract directly, so we're responsible for working with edgy staff with staffing subs, getting subs in our buildings. We work directly with edgy staff. But whenever a sub is hired through edgy staff, they have to have a license. So the ESD helps with those application pieces and getting the licensures for the substitutes so they can work in our schools. We do that for teachers. We do, but it is a time-consuming process, so it's helpful that the ESD supports us with that.
Yeah, it's, if you look at that fifth goal, it's one of, it's one of the ways um, we help achieve that. So maximizing operational efficiencies. Well, and the other reason is the subs hi, they work across multiple school districts, so they're not just subbing in Roseburg. Um, many of them kind of have a region, so they might be Roseburg, Sutherland Glide. Um, and so again, that's the maximizing the operational efficiencies of, of instead of it's one less thing Michelle's folks got to do. We're happy to, happy to support that.
Very helpful clarification, everybody. That, that was very helpful.
I just, so you've noticed I've been very good tonight. I've waited until the last. You also do orientation, right? If there's somebody that's applying to be a sub and you, you know, you've gone through the paperwork, is there some type of orientation if they haven't been in a classroom? Who, do we do that?
At edgy staff.
But they do it at, they do it at the ESD or here or where?
Yeah, so one of edgy staff's um, folks, uh, we make, we have office space for them at one of our buildings. Um, if we might have if built a room that they're doing that in, yeah.
But they're getting some type of quick training, basically.
Yeah, and, and, and that's a point of feedback we get all the time on subs and um, the support that they need in the classroom and, and when we get that feedback, we pass it on to edgy staff so that they can enhance their trainings.
So I just have a couple.
Sure.
I, I do want to, and I do appreciate Director Shirklaff and Leoni. Cause we did ask last time about the dollar amount. That really needs, that really needs to be there and if you're not clear, Jared can get back, but we, we would like to have that.
Okay.
I think that's important. Have you seen this? I think the, the ESD produced this or is this, okay, and then we highlighted, we changed it up a little bit.
Yes, okay.
Okay.
The staff assignments, yep.
Yeah, so I just have a, a question and it's not to insult anybody, but I'm, because some of the names on here, I'm looking at, oh, former employees of ours and so I'm going to look at uh, autism ASD for a minute. And I notice there's a, it doesn't matter who's on there, but I, I just want to be sure that these folks that are in these uh, programs that are working with these folks. Are we sure they're, are, how, how do we know they're properly trained to be working with these kids? I mean, uh, what's the process in that?
Similar to yours, we, job descriptions and qualifications and um, we go through that process. Um, if they're early career, then again, we're resourcing and supporting them in order to advance that skills and knowledge. They have access to professional learning. Um, we're, we're coaching and supporting, so very similar to a school district.
I'm just a little nervous about that because I'm seeing that, oh, okay. So I do have a couple of questions and I'm just a little nervous about that because I'm seeing that, oh, okay. So I do have a couple of questions and a couple of them have been hit upon, but um what direct input does the district have in the development of professional learning opportunities being offered and supported by the SD? You kind of asked a question, but I took a little step, yeah.
So our model is in process of changing right now, where we're again, where we're really trying to uh access the district conversations around those priorities. Historically, we've had a group of curriculum directors. Uh, you know, we look at data, we look at needs. Um, we uh I think all districts are participating in I R R E. I use the acronym and you guys are familiar with it, okay? Um, and so that data, you know, that comes from teachers, that comes from students, that data informs um how we prioritize uh professional learning. And then again, the most important part is just talking with the district about their needs.
So do you think it's working well? Is there good? I mean, Melissa, does that work? Is that? Are you happy the way that's going?
Um, there are some things that we would like to see on a yearly basis happen that hasn't happened. Um, but we are reaching out, we're requesting. There've been some times where we've had to find funding for training, and I'm thinking specifically in threat assessment. Would be a good thing to have yearly in the community about that. So there are things we do request.
Okay, I'm just curious. Um, what percentage of the SD services providers are virtual employees? And does the district have a voice in how services are provided to our students?
Um, so the the only virtual employees are in speech. Uh, and so right now, Roseburg has six TELA in speech. Um, and I it's a tricky conversation, it's a tricky one. So yes, I do believe there's conversations sometimes around. So we have um employees um uh around TELA, but it's also at the end of the day. Um, we need speech s- uh services and we need therapy. And so um we work really hard to recruit in person, and I believe those numbers went up this year. Um, but yeah, at the end of the day, um the services, uh kids need the services and and so uh we find every possible way we can provide those services. Um, I've asked my speech and language coordinator, um what's the data? Is there a difference in service between TELA and in person? And nationally, it's, there's not really a significant difference. Um, it does require a a a little bit more FTE because of uh, you know, kids have to have uh an SLPA in there, but um, so yeah, it's it's a change in um access to SLPs and uh as as hard as we work to recruit folks in person, it's just at the end of the day, kids need service. And so we find highly qualified folks is our goal. And um and sometimes that's delivered in person and sometimes that's delivered via TELA, but
So what what happens? Um, because I know what happens. It's, I think it's just universal that um one of our ESD providers is sick. Do you provide a sub, you know, or we're just S O L? I mean, we're just, it's just, it's not gonna happen that day, or that student's not gonna get whatever service they're getting. Because you're gonna be somebody that going to fill in or it's just a lost day for that student.
Like daily absences? I'll look into our our protocol for that. Yeah.
I mean.
Yeah, if it's a long term, then then we
But daily too, to me, that's important.
Yeah, I'll look into that protocol. I wanna make sure I get you an accurate answer there.
I think I am.
I just wanna piggyback on yours a bit. Give you a break. When you said, so when I asked earlier, you have eight or nine, we're guessing speech therapists, and you're saying six of them are virtual. So we only actually have three speech and therapists that are physically in the Roseburg School District on a daily basis.
It's um
Around three.
Sorry, the number is in front. Yes, we have six TELA in Roseburg, four in person. There's ten people overall in pers- uh, there's ten uh folks in person every day.
Okay, and then I see on this organizational chart, there's not one person at one school anywhere. Like everybody's double booked at a lot of places. Uh, so like Melrose has three speech language, but then each of those three people has a secondary school or a different school that they're also at. So, okay, that's just, it's a thin spread for the in-person speech, which in my, I know you just said that the data doesn't back this up, but in my experience, speech needs to be talked in person. So you can see that mouth movement, I don't I don't know that telehealth quite does the same job, but I defer to your judgment on the the studies because I haven't done the studies. I've just seen it in person.
Yeah, and we also have um SLPAs in addition to our speech paths who are in person with kids. And some of, some speech services are delivered in groups and some speech services are delivered one-on-one. And then we have folks who are working with um uh technology. So like the students who are nonverbal or who who don't have a lot of language, there's a lot of tech uh support in that service that's a little different as well.
Thank you for reminding me. That that was my per- where my personal experience differs from your statistical analysis is uh I, there's kids that they just won't compete or participate on a computer screen. They're just not gonna stare at the screen and do it. But if there's a person in front of their face, looking at them, making eye contact, they can engage with that person. So, yeah, I, in my opinion, it's I don't like the virtual option. I realize you gotta do what you gotta do to fill the spots and and get the services provided, but I don't think that necessarily qualifies as providing the services if it's only virtual in a lot of cases for some kiddos.
Just a quick question. Do you do occupational therapy virtually?
They're all in person.
That's great.
Mm hmm.
Um, Director Crimmitt has asked me to ask a few questions. Um, she had questions um to try to understand when FTT, FTE is listed as 1.55 IE or ASD console. What does this actually look like for services to Roseburg Public Schools?
So um we have meeting, like how many people is that in total?
I believe so.
So I believe it's all four. You have acts, uh we, you have one FTE. Um, that is one person and then um uh based on needs of kids in schools, um the other uh point five five is met uh via our other uh consultants. Three, sorry, thank you. Yep.
Thank you. Um, let me see. She had also a couple of other questions. She was wanting to know who supervises and evaluates your employees who work in our buildings. We kind of addressed that a little bit earlier because this person is working for you, this person is working for us. We're all working for the good of the children. But how do we, how does that evaluation process go? Is that something we're working on to try to make it something cohesive or how does that work?
Yeah, so um we follow a a very similar evaluation process to to Roseburg. We have the standards. Um, we have a framework that we use. Um, and our evaluation systems are specific to the role. So we have an evaluation document for SLPs for, because their jobs are different than teachers are different than, like an SLP is different than an OT. Um, those evaluations are performed by their supervisors um uh that are our employees.
Do the directors that they're serving under for Roseburg, do those directors get input into those evaluations?
Um, I would say yes, in general, and it's probably a spot that we can always grow and continue to improve and figure out um even better ways to get that feedback.
Great. I I just really wanna see us work together.
Yeah.
I mean, these kids are everything to us and we're working really hard to run a tight ship so that things will be better for them. So
Absolutely.
Thank you for fielding these
Yeah.
As they're just kind of coming together. So, but I still have some more. Um, actually, we, that one was already answered, so don't need to worry about that. Um, I I was wondering how the deaf and hard of hearing and visually impaired or blind, how those services are provided to the district.
Yeah, so um this is the wonderful land of ESDs. That contract is held by Southern Oregon ESD. And those services are provided by that ESD. Um, we've historically, um they have been uh in our buildings until recently because we keep growing, so we needed those spaces. But there are Southern Oregon employees and they're wonderful.
They are like, well, you're happy with the services that they are providing?
That would, that would be a question to you. So I don't have involvement in those services because they're not my employees. Yeah.
True.
Because I lose things. So um the Southern Oregon ESD, that's part of our service plan. I mean, who, it's so, but we're used in the Southern Oregon. So also, so we are able to use other ESDs for services.
So there's a few um state contracts um that not all ESDs hold. So Southern Oregon holds the regional inclusive services. They grant, they they subgrant to us funding for autism and OT and PT for our motor team. So we get a small portion of funding for that. They hold the contract for deaf and hard of hearing. Like we hold the E, the regional EI E C S E contract for five counties. So uh if you, there's, there's a phrase in ESD, if you've met one ESD, you've met one ESD. Because we're all based on just state contracts, we're all doing different work in different services.
So I'm, this is hypothetical, like uh, I'm just not a great flag. I'm just asking. So uh on speech. Yeah, I guess, you know, you're, we're not happy with, I mean, some directors are more, have more involvement. And and I will tell you, I had a speech issue and I and I, of course, that was many years, sixty years ago, and I'm not sure I could have sat in front of a fact, I have a hard time sitting in front of a computer today, but it sounds like, let's say you go to the Laney, I'm just throwing Laney ESD because, you know, you could contract with them on speech um therapist if they were in, if they had all in live person. I mean, is that possible? I mean, it's legal. I mean, is is that what, I'm not saying we're doing it. I'm just, I'm just curious if
Um, I can review the statute and um follow up on that question. Yep.
I don't want people to read into this. I'm just curious how how this works.
Yeah, and the the TELA in person is across the state. Um, we need more people to become SLPs. That would be wonderful in the state of Oregon. So
That's, that's
As you're talking to kids, uh remind them of that wonderful profession. So it's um school psychs, uh SLPs, they're all um ASD, they're all very hard to fill positions. Um, and so uh ESDs have become very resourceful in how we we get that need met.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, um, so just for clarification, our ESD doesn't serve any other district outside of our county, do we?
Uh, we have a couple of contracts for business services.
Nothing that pertains directly to our children?
No. Well, um let me rephrase that. Early Learning Hub serves Douglas Lake and Clamath. So that's zero to five year olds. We have programs in other counties. And that's again, yet another region in the state. And that's how that region was built, was Douglas, Clamath and Lake for for zero to five year olds, for just um, you know, supporting parents with literacy skill, you know, how to reach your kids and and working on systems alignment for those. Same with um our um shoot, childcare resource and referral. I have the acronym. I'm working hard not to say them. Um, same, same county. So we have some early learning services that do serve children outside of um our county.
Um, any other questions before we kind of start winding down? Jared, do you have anything that you would like to add? Um, and also Melissa, if you have anything to add or any other director, you know, you'll have freedom to to ask. We just need to uh better understand all of this. And so your clarification could help us.
I mean, you wanna start, anybody?
Sure. So you asked, what does it look like with the 1.55 ASD services? So it's four people, one serves two schools, another serves three schools, another serves three schools, and another individual serves six schools. So um we have over a hundred and thirty-five students that have ASD on their IEPs. So that's a significant number of students that spread. We didn't have input on who was placed in the schools. And so um they were placed before I was able to schedule a meeting per our request. Um, we provide information to the ESD on performance and they have been receptive hearing that, but we do provide information when there's concerns and when there's corrective action to be made. You asked the question, um, how many SLPs? We have nine SLPs, including the coordinator who is serving Horizon. So that's ten and she's licensed and she's in person. So that's four total people in person out of six SLPs. To your question, is virtual as uh quality for our students with special needs, it really depends on their needs. And we've been trying really hard not to have virtual in our more impacted classrooms, like our DLCs and our um SRC's and ERC's classrooms, because the students often have attention issues and it's harder for them to uh engage. We often have virtual people in those positions also, and I believe it's with the hiring and what their preference is to get them here is what it was explained to me. There are situations where we have very highly skilled virtual people. And it has worked. And there's been situations where it hasn't been optimal. To your question over here, what happens when someone is absent and they are serving those um speech and language services? If it's just a day or two, those aren't covered and they're made up when they return. We have had situations where it was a longer absence, and so the other SLPs cover for each other. We've had situations last year where um it was an employment situation. And so we had SLPs. One school had four SLPs covering at Q-Crest last year at one single time. So they do try to cover. It's not optimal and it's a lot, we get a lot of change. It appears with the virtual, it's not as stable as it is with in-person services. And so we've had to adjust mid-year with people changing. To your question about the quality of service, when there are concerns about the quality of service and that professional development, we are, I am very vocal in getting um the coordinator or the director, whoever we have to talk to to come and specifically do corrective action on the pieces that we feel need to be addressed. To the question of um inputs and feedback, it has been just last year, we had our first survey at the end of the year. But prior to that, our department made an appointment to meet with the ESD to make sure that they got information about what worked well and what we would like to see happen in the following years and for service. Thank you. Um, any other questions? A clarification?
Just to clarify, and I know this was some way back at the beginning of the conversation, we were talking about ADM weighted, special education students, sorry, full second weighting.
Thank you.
Not a half, and it is to um eleven percent of the total population of students. So that is how that is weighted. Um, does the ESD still require to do a direct support survey?
Yes.
So maybe could those numbers be helpful? Like, I realize you're probably working on those right now for last fiscal year, but you could pull up the twenty-two, twenty-three, maybe as a guidance? So give us, could that gives numbers? That gives us
Mm hmm.
how much, so
Yeah.
That might solve that question.
Yep.
Um, yeah, I'm ex- I'm excited to hear that we're working on some things because, you know, in my, in my personal view, you know, we are your largest district, you know, and it's, we have the most kids that we'd wanna focus probably the most of your attentions on making sure that runs well. Especially when our special ed has been targeted, that is very important to us. And um I would love to see, and I I think I can speak for the board, um that, you know, you're proactive on coming to the district to say, what do you need? And we're gonna try And we're going to try really hard to do what we can, even if we focus on three things. You know, if we can just get a start of um, getting, getting our special ed, everything we need there, just to try to get them, so they're no longer targeted. That would be great. Because as you may or may not know, our test scores are above the state average and that is just the beginning. We are not stopping regaining momentum. We, we believe that every child can learn. And we are wanting to support that as much as we can. So we may sound a little hard-nosed and a little bit kind of grumpy, but we manage taxpayers' dollars. We, we have a finger in all these children's lives and we have to do our very best. We are expecting that for all of our employees at performing at least at one percent better, because with small changes, you get great, you know, great return. We as a board will be focusing even more so. They don't know it yet, but we yeah, we're going to talk about how we can grow one percent better as well. So we would love to partner with you in this and actually very excited because I think some wonderful things are going to happen.
I agree. Yeah.
So much for you can use questions and getting back to Jared with any information that we need and um, to report that uh, district direct support numbers from twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty, it would be very helpful.
Yeah. And thank you again for inviting me. It's uh, I, I always say I don't know what I don't know. So it's helpful to know what your questions are, what, how you're thinking about things so that we can get information um, to you. And I, I wanted, I uh, and I intended to celebrate your growth. And I know I've, I've been seeing, I've been working alongside Jared uh, for many years now, now. And I know that it is just the beginning. And, and what I shared with Jared is it was, uh, it's really awesome to see the things that Jared and Michelle and Jill and Melissa um, have been working on really hard and Cheryl and making the money happen for all that. Have been working on really hard, you know, you're starting to see those gains publicly. We could, obviously you can always see those internally before it becomes public. And I'm very grateful to Jared that, that he's opened the doors, that we can have these conversations. Um, we strive to be the best. And so we have to, we have to have the feedback in order to do that. And also celebrate the things that are working really well as well. So.
Great. Well, thank you very much for coming.
Yep. Thank you.
Um, Can I ask where's this going? What's the next step? What's?
Yeah, next time, I'm going to be getting back with Cheryl or with Jared with some numbers and working with Melissa. Um, to get what we need. Maybe we can focus just like on three things, you know, what, what would be the most important that you see. Um, I know we as a board are definitely interested in our, our special education services and want to see that. And I know that's the hardest though. But we can do it, right?
Yep.
We can make it better. So thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Concludes that part of the meeting. Um, I will say our next meeting is a regular session, November thirteenth at Joe Lane um, middle school. And uh, we are now going to be entering into executive session pursuant to O R S one nine two dot six six zero two I. Thank you for joining us this evening. We'll take a short break and reconvene with executive session.